The important contributions of these men and women and focus attention to the vital role of these public officials in our democracy. So, as I mentioned, each year we take some time at our board meeting to recognize our wonderful Board of Education here in Parkway. And I say that, and I know some people say, "Well, of course, the superintendent is going to say that these are, in essence, my bosses." But I can tell you that board members like the ones we have here in Parkway not only serve the superintendent, but they serve so many people and so many children and their interests moving forth. So, we really do need to take the time tonight to recognize our hard-working men and women here in Parkway and who are very skilled in what they do, put countless hours of effort in, are dedicated. And I will say, I've worked with board members for a lot of years now, and our board is certainly focused on children and their needs, and I'm very, very proud to be able to serve with them. So, I'm going to start off the recognition, and then I'm going to be followed by my colleagues tonight in recognizing our individual board members. And I am delighted to recognize our most veteran board member, Dee Mogerman. Dee Mogerman has served on the board as long as I've been here. In fact, she's served the Parkway Board since 2014. So, she is...2004, I'm sorry. I had to mind note, I just said 2004. So, she served, was selected to serve the board through a special opening that occurred, and then she was elected in 2005, 2008, 2011, and 2014. So, she's certainly been on our board, our most veteran board members. She's a longtime volunteer in Parkway, and she's served the board twice as president and as vice president, and has served numerous roles on the board. Dee could tell you that she's almost on everything that a board member does when serving on a board, from bond work to choosing superintendents to dealing with many, many issues on the Board of Education. She is certainly a student-centered board member. She is, in so many ways, really walks the talk in terms of success for all students, providing prudent financial stewardship for our district and our resources, increasing the opportunities, availability of Parkway students in the community, and certainly to really make our students aware of a bigger world out there and a global economy. Dee, since I've been here, certainly has been one of our most dedicated and demanding board members relative to our following Project Parkway. She was certainly helped in the design of Project Parkway, and she has been insistent that we take that to implementation, and that's a very, very important role, and if board members, and Dee has played that out very, very well. Dee certainly works with her husband closely in a law practice here, and as I mentioned, she's an active volunteer. And I would sum up in terms of Dee as being a kind, compassionate, student-focused, collaborative, and certainly maybe most importantly, supportive of her board members, her fellow board members, and our educators here in Parkway. She truly represents the finest that we have. So, for Dee and our board members, I'll just say, we have a couple of gifts. One is an autographed copy of a book that Manny Scott, who you heard board members, turning the page, a memoir by Manny Scott, who, by the way, spoke to all our staff back in early November. And we have some Parkway cares notes that are personalized for you. So, that's one piece of what we're going to be giving you. And then, secondly, we're going to be giving you a Missouri School Board Association certificate by our Larry Felon, who is the president of the Missouri School Board Association, and Melissa Randall, who is the executive director. And then, just the last couple of days, New State Representative Derek Greier has a certificate that he would like us to pass on. So, both of those personalized for our board members. So, Dee, thank you for your efforts, and I'm going to hand this off to who's following me, Nikki? Desi right behind me? Desi Kirchhoff is up next. Dee Mogerman, let's give Dee a hand.
I will second Dr. Marty's comments about what a wonderful board that we do have and opportunity to work with. We collaborate with a lot of school districts across St. Louis County, across the state, and we really appreciate the work you do. We know some of the struggles that other districts face, and we know how lucky we are to have a dedicated working group like you. So, as Dr. Marty said, we all have board members to introduce and recognize tonight. And this evening, I have Sudhir Rathoy. So, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." And I think Sudhir would recognize that quote from Nelson Mandela, because that is one that inspired him to run for his position on the board. This shows how much he values education by being here this evening, but also he shows it in his own personal life, as he has his own bachelor's and master's degree and several other higher learning certificates that have served him well in his profession, which, by profession, is a business analyst, and he has had the opportunity to not only serve this community, but he has worked as a business analyst for many, many world-class organizations as well. Some of the things that he is proud of, certainly his North High graduate and involvement in the community. But not only does Sudhir model the behaviors of higher education and have shown that through the certificates that he has earned, he also, as becoming a board member, made it very clear that he was dedicated to want to hire the very best and retain the very best staff here in Parkway and remains committed to that. And also, in conversations with him, and it's early running for the board, he was very clear on his desire to not only keep Parkway as a top-achieving school in the state of Missouri, but really his desire to make it the highest and best-achieving school in the nation. And so, Sudhir, we thank you for your work and your volunteering for this position. So, thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of recognizing our board president, Mr. Chris Jacob. If you know Chris, you know he's an excellent joke teller. And if I...I should start off by telling a joke, but I'm really not nearly as funny as Chris is, so I'm not going to go there. But Chris is a successful businessman. He hails from the state of California, went to his undergraduate at University of Houston, and is a fellow veteran. Thank you for your service. You know, when I think about the book that we were giving you tonight, the Manny Scott's book, and the message that he gave to us at the all-district celebration, I do think of Chris. After watching Chris and learning from him since he came on the board really nearly nine years ago, it's obvious that he understands that we never give up on kids, and you just never know when something you say or do might make an impact, a positive impact, on a student's life. And I think he feels the same way about pretty much everybody he comes into contact with. Chris is currently serving his second term as our board president, and like I said, he has served selflessly for, gosh, it's nearly a decade. Oh, is this his third term? Oh, my goodness.
Not consecutive.
Oh, not consecutive. Wow. So, it's his third time around. And been on the board nearly a decade. And there have been many days when I see Chris at meetings at 10:00 at night, and the next morning at 7:00 a.m., he's at another function, as many of you all are. And we're grateful for that. We know that you care deeply, Chris, about public education and about Parkway. So, on behalf of a grateful community and school district, we want to thank you for all you do to make Parkway such a shining star and for all you do to help our students succeed in school and in life. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. I'd like to echo the sentiments of thanks for the volunteer service of all of you. But this evening, I have the privilege of recognizing Beth Feldman for her service. And as I was, Beth, as I was thinking about and reflecting on your service and your volunteer work here in Parkway to serve on the board, I thought of our mission, capable. Beth is definitely capable of serving on this board. Her and her family have lived in the community. She has high school graduates from Parkway. She understands our community, and she's been on the board since 2008. Is that correct? June 2008. So, she also has lots of experience that makes her capable not only within the school system, but within the larger community, and understanding our students and our families. Confident through all of her work since 2008, Project Parkway, Project Parkway 2.1, new curriculum, budget, boundaries, start times. So, definitely, you have that knowledge, and you have that background, and you continue to learn, you know, thinking about that. But then, as I came to the next two Cs, even became more evident, curiosity. Beth, we can't thank you enough for your good questions. And your go-to question, and I've already heard you today ask, "How does this help kids? How does this help kids?" That grounds all of your decisions, and we greatly appreciate that, because we need to have that in the forefront, and that's what our mission calls for. It calls for all. And then, our new C, caring. Beth, I think you're one of the best listeners I've ever worked with. You take time to listen and understand, and then through that caring, advocate for each individual student that our mission and vision talk about. Also, your caring through engagement in the work that you do outside of Parkway and your volunteer work in the community for the greater St. Louis area. You're an exemplary model of Parkway's mission, and we thank you from the bottom of the Parkway heart for your service.
Good evening. I also would like to echo the sentiments that were mentioned earlier. Desi was absolutely accurate that we do talk to colleagues across St. Louis County, and I can't even imagine working with another board, because you all live our Parkway mission and our vision, and there's nothing better than you can do than that. So, I have the pleasure of acknowledging Kim Applebaum this evening. Kim's been a board member since 2012. She has served in various areas through the Parkway, school, through school, and through scouting. Some volunteer positions that she has served in, just some, her PTO secretary, room party planner, spirit wear chair, Cub Scout den leader, Boy Scout treasurer, and she is still very involved in the West High band boosters. Kim has two children who are part of the Parkway community. One is already a Parkway West grad, and while her youngest will graduate in May. As you can see, her service to the Parkway School District has a personal perspective. Kim currently serves on the Special School District Governing Council, and she serves on the Student Services Subcommittee, and is deeply involved in all aspects of the Parkway School District. Over the years, Kim has acquired the appreciation for the work and dedication it takes to operate such a large school district that keeps students as their top priority. And without all of you, we wouldn't have students at our top priority. Kim believes in the work around our Parkway mission and in our newly-approved Parkway goals. Kim is a strong advocate for Parkway, for our students, our staff, and our community. Kim is also capable, curious, caring, and confident, and displays these qualities during each interaction I've had with her over the years. In addition, Kim is passionate. She is passionate that we meet the academic, the social, and emotional needs of students. She always takes time to immerse herself and learn, so what we can do is serve students in the best capacity. Thank you for the hours that you spend, and I know the pay is not so grand, but you know what? You keep coming back, and we appreciate it. Please join me, everyone, for Kim and her service to the board.
Good evening. Like my colleagues, I echo their same sentiments. There is no other board like our Parkway Board. It is a tremendous board that we get to work for and with every day. Tonight, I'm going to begin by honoring Dr. Sam Sorrentino. When I think of Dr. Sorrentino, I think of a gentle and giving man that has served the community of Parkway School District for many years in many capacities. Sam began his career at Parkway as a teacher. He served for several years in administrative positions as well, ranging from assistant principal to principal to manager of secondary curriculum to assistant superintendent of human resources. Sam's dedication and support of Parkway School District has been very visible. When Sam retired, he really couldn't end his education career. He served in a private education sector for a while as well. Sam has blessed us with serving as a board member for several years now. He's been heavily involved in Project Parkway Steering Committee and has numerous duties serving as vice president over this past year. It's been a great pleasure to work with Sam. Sam has a wealth of knowledge that provides excellent expertise in making critical educational decisions for Parkway. Sam, we are so delighted that you volunteer your time and talent to serve as a member of Parkway School District Board of Education. You help us to make Parkway a great place for each of our children to be capable, curious, caring, and confident learners who understand and can respond to the challenges of our ever-changing world. Thank you for all you do.
I also have the pleasure of honoring Mrs. Debbie Hopper. Debbie, when I think of you, I think of a caring mother who wants to make a difference in Parkway School District for her children and for her community. Debbie is a proud mother of two, and you have served on several volunteer positions with your children, including scouts, performing arts activities, and of course, your church. For Parkway, Debbie brings many talents to our board, including her analytical perspective. Debbie serves on many committees in Parkway, including the Student Services Subcommittee and the Government Relations Committee, just to name a few. Debbie is completing her third year as a board member, and we are extremely thankful for her leadership. Debbie, we are so delighted that you volunteer your time and talent to serve as a member of the Parkway School District Board of Education. You also help Parkway be a great place for each of our children to be capable, curious, caring, and confident learners who can understand and respond to the challenges in the ever-changing world. Thank you, Debbie, for all you do.
I would just ask our community to once again give our board a round of applause and appreciation of the wonderful work that they do, again, for no compensation, but their dedication is really a model of what boards could and should be all over the state and all over this country. We're delighted to be able to work with them. As my colleague said, I enjoy my interaction and my work with them all the time, and I'm very honored to be able to serve with them. Thank you, board, and let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Marty, and all of you on the staff team. I know that each board member really appreciates the accolades that were expressed tonight about each one of them. I know as president, the support I received, the coaching, the correction, to do a better job is very much appreciated, and I consider you one of them, my mentor, and really look forward to the opportunity of being here with them. And I know we're a pretty good team, so thank you very much. I'd also like to recognize tonight a team, some other volunteers that are here, and some scouts. If, I don't know if you're all from the same troop, but if somebody could stand up and tell us what troop you're from and what merit badge you might be working on. Who is merit badge? And we have another one here, a couple of...
Matthew Hopper, June 631, from down by San Marcos.
All right, well, thank you. We welcome you here tonight. Hopefully, it'll help you with your merit badge. Addition and corrections, 6.01, and addition to 11.04, approval of personnel items, and 6.02, addition of agenda items, 11.23, approval of pricing for Kelly Educational Staffing. 7.0, citizen statements. We have one tonight, and if you would be so kind as to say your name and your address, we'd appreciate it. And tonight, our lone citizen, that will address us is Jim Lionfields.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? My name is Jim Lionfields, and my address is 1427 Thomas Mason Place, Baldwin, Missouri. So, I thank you for providing the time for me to speak. My name is Jim Lion...Dr. Jim Lionfields. I'm a resident of Parkway School District, business owner, a member of the West County Community Action Network, and the father of three children who attended Parkway from elementary school through their graduations from Parkway High School, Parkway West High School. My wife and I, as well as my three kids, believe that they did, that they had a very excellent educational experience, and we thank you for that. You may remember my son, Jake, who is a member of the West County Community Action Network and has spoken with many of you in the past months about the disproportionate suspensions of black students in kindergarten through third grade in Parkway School District. Members of WCAN were grateful to meet with members of the Parkway Administration in 2016 to learn more about the efforts in place to keep all kids in the classroom with such techniques as creating trauma-informed schools, implementing restorative justice practices in the classroom, and providing anti-bias training to some staff and administration. In November, WCAN partnered with many organizations to recognize 20 school districts who were committed to increasing their efforts to close the discipline gap at the Regional School Assembly. Four districts committed to changing their policies by 2018. Though we were disappointed Parkway did not publicly commit to this at this event, WCAN remains committed to addressing the discipline gap among Parkway's youngest students, and we look forward to continued conversations with Dr. Marty and Dr. Watson about how we can best support these efforts. In addition to addressing the school-to-prison pipeline for young students, WCAN is committed to social...I'm sorry, to racial justice for students and citizens of all ages. I am here today to bring to your attention concerns of parents and citizens across our region raised in response to the changes in Missouri Statute 565.054, which addresses potential criminal charges for students involved in school fights. These changes have brought our attention to the fact that high school students could be given felony charges for fights in or out of school. Our worry, and the worry of other key stakeholders, especially families who have children of color, is that students who fight at school are at great risk of being pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline. It is our understanding that some districts have created a memorandum of understanding with local police departments to guide the decisions made by those serving as school resource officers, helping districts and police determine when to enforce the felony option for school conflicts. WCAN is here today to bring this to your attention and ask if an understanding is in place at Parkway. If so, we ask that you make all the memorandums of understanding public to parents and to community members. If not, WCAN would like to offer our support to the district and to the local police departments in developing such an agreement for the protection of students of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lionfield, and you really did a lot. 8.0, approval of agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for January 11, 2017? Any opposed? Any all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Resolutions, there are none tonight. Communications, calendar of meetings. The annual mid-year board retreat will take place on Saturday, January 28, 2017, in Honolulu, Hawaii. Here at the Parkway Administering Center, beginning of the year. It's not much of a retreat, but we like to say that, make ourselves... The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 8, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. on Central Middle, and anticipated closed session will begin at 6:00 p.m. 10.02, board candidate filing. Board candidate filing began on Tuesday, December 13, 2016. Doors were opened at 8:00 a.m. for those that had come early here at the Parkway, or at the Parkway Administering Center, and continues until the district's regular business hours through 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 17, 2017. Those terms which will expire and be open are the terms of Deborah Hopper, myself, Chris Jacob, and Dee Mogerman, which expired in April 2017. Let me just read, and if these people are here, if they would stand, so that they might be recognized as potential candidates for board directorship. In order of filing, those candidates who have filed are number one, Robert Gore; two, Anne Marie Buhan; three, Chris Jacob...I'm not going to stand. Four, Peter Messenger; five, Don Sternhagen; six, Deborah Hopper...I'm sorry. Thank you. Six, Deborah Hopper; seven, Matthew Ecklerly; eight, Christie Klein Davis; and number nine, Sophia Ford Glatt...and something else, but we're probably not through with Sophia. Thank you. And we...who don't, we might have another one or two before the deadline. Thank you, each and every one of you, for the expression of your willingness to be volunteers and to serve the children, the patrons of Parkway. 10.03, board liaison reports. Is there anyone that has a board liaison report?
No, I'm just graduating.
I might just begin with one. A couple of us attended in one of the libraries, the Open Library Forum. Very well attended. It was a fairly cold night, that night at the library, but a great discussion about where libraries are going and need to go and will go, but then there's just a lot going on there, and it's very dynamic. Libraries aren't what they used to be. They're not. In fact, you think of libraries... In fact, you think of libraries as places where they tell you to be quiet, not anymore. They encourage interaction, and in some places, there are rooms where you can certainly have a lot of interaction. It was a very, very nice event. Are there any other?
I had the pleasure of attending the VEX, was it the Robotics Competition? And actually, it was hosted right here, which was amazing. This whole area was cram-packed with kids and their robots and their computers, you know, making sure that it was all programmed right. And I'm proud to say, I think that North, Central, and West all competed. I think there were 38 robots in the competition. West, two of their teams came in first, so they have qualified to go on to state. And the names, if I get them right, Three Loose Screws and Moosehead, I think, are the two team names, so I thought I'd share that. Congratulations to them.
And who was one of the team members?
My son. Yeah, but it was, it's really awesome. If you've never seen that, I was never into robotics or anything, but if you've never seen that, it's amazing how they programmed them to grab and lift and push things and shove things. It's just amazing. It's amazing, all I can say.
Thank you, Ms. Applebaum. Wonderful. Any others?
I would just like to share, I had the wonderful opportunity to accompany our North Choir to the activities, inauguration activities. Governor, we can now say Governor Greitens, not Governor electing longer, he was sworn in at noon on Monday, had invited the North Choir to perform at an interface ceremony or activity before the inauguration, and they did a marvelous job. I was so proud of them. They performed in front of the Governor, outgoing Governor Nixon and incoming Greitens, plus Senators McCaskill and Blunt and many other dignitaries. I don't think that students realize who they're performing for, but they did such a wonderful job, very proud of them. Brian Reeves as a director, and there were 69 students that traveled over there. I was delighted to leave at 5:00 in the morning, and with Jenny Markwart, the principal, and it was just a wonderful day. And so very, very proud of our North graduates, and of course, very proud of Governor Greitens, who is alumni of Parkway North.
Thank you, that's great. Our kids do a wonderful job in many, many areas of expertise, not the least in the arts. Thank you for that report. There are some upcoming subcommittee meetings. TLA Subcommittee meeting will be held February 2, 2017, at 4:15 PM for those that are on that committee. Action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 11, 2017 board materials? Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed? Then, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none? The motion carries seven zero. And moving to 12.0, action items. 12.1, the approval of the 2017-18 budget assumptions. We've been having a few discussions about this and some things presented, so we're looking forward to a final presentation from Patty Bedford, our CFO.
Well, the presentation, of course, was included in your package, so I'm actually here to entertain any questions that you may have, and then ask for your approval so we can begin our budget development.
Any questions? I know you're ready to go to work.
We start teacher negotiations tomorrow, so we are very prepared.
So may, in that case, if there are no questions or comments, then may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the budget assumptions for the initial development of the preliminary 2017-18 district budget? Roll call, please.
This is Dr. Applebaum, yes. This is Dr. Hopper, yes. This is Dr. Mulgrom, yes. This is Dr. Reddick, yes.
Yes, motion carries at seven zero. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. And 12.02, we have up for approval tonight the 2017 legislative positions. This is something we've been working on with two other school districts too, as well as our Ed+. And I think we've got some pretty good stuff. Annie Dickerson, our manager of communications and community relations, will help us understand it better.
Well, one of the first things, thank you for having me, I wanted to share is, a lot of this work that you see in front of you, as you know, Parkway's had a legislative platform for years that we use to inform our work with legislators and to ensure that we are communicating our needs with them. But a lot of the work you see is in collaboration with Education Plus and a lot of other superintendents and districts across the area. One of the things that I'm proud of is that we had, Dr., or Mr. Jacob, he is the only sitting board member in the region that sits on that committee. So most of this work is typically done by Dr. Marty and other area superintendents, but we're fortunate enough that you helped with this work this year, so thank you for that. What you have in front of you, again, is a regional effort to have a singular voice among area districts to talk with our legislators about the work this year. And you may have noticed, in previous years, we've had kind of a longer legislative platform, and we felt like it was important, particularly with some changes in Jefferson City this year, that we were concise in our messaging and that we really focused on our top priorities. So we have it down to one page and four priorities that you have presented in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. It's the Missouri Association of School Administrators. Yeah. Oh, superintendents, I'm sorry.
How does this differ, you know, we have a meeting in a couple weeks, our friends at Rockwood and Pattonville, and all of our associated legislators. How does our platform differ from theirs? Because we will all, I assume, be handing them out that day.
We actually talked about that, and we decided, and I think Beth had some suggestions as well that were helpful, that we feel like it's really important to talk with our legislators in a unified voice, and so we are handing them one platform that has essentially the support of Rockwood, Pattonville, and Parkway. So what you'll see is, on ours, there's an introductory paragraph that's more specific to our work, but from the priority positions down, that's what we will share with our legislators at the breakfast.
Does it differ much from the Ed+ platform?
The, it's exactly the same.
Okay, good. Should.
Yeah, and I think that's nice. We got to a place this year, I feel like, on the committee where we had a singular voice, which is, I think, really important, so we're excited about it.
So where does it go beyond the legislators?
At this point, I know we presented to them and received it and all, but what happens after that?
I think that it continues to guide our work as we look at bills that are coming forth and being proposed, that we go back to our platform and say, what's important to us? And also, I know there's an effort with Education Plus to take this and maybe develop some additional key messaging around specific bills as we start to see all the legislation filed, that we can look at specific bills and say, okay, here's what we want to share with legislators about this specific piece of legislation.
Actually, if I could just respond, I think that's a great question, because, you know, it's one thing just to have a platform. So, for example, Annie and I met with a new legislator on Friday, and we took this with us, even though it was in draft form, and spent quite a bit of time. And one of the things I'm proud of, and I think Annie has a lot to do with this and the group, it's much more positive, you know, we used to have platforms that said, don't do things, and now we're basically saying, these are the things we'd like to see. So it's a much more positive instrument than it used to be, and I think that's helpful. I will tell you that the last couple of years, I will use this as we get into legislative session. Legislators will call us and ask, and I always remind them what our platform is. We'll keep, as Annie said, kind of grounding, going back to when there's, you know, legislation that seems to be different, and we'll say, that doesn't, you know, we're not, we can't be supportive of that because that's not really grounded in some of our beliefs of what, where we need to go. So it's an ongoing instrument. It may be used with legislators as a whole, it may be used with other districts as we think about working together.
Well, and in past years, for example, our Government Relations Committee, members would go down to Jefferson City and meet in individual legislators' offices and talk together about this, as well as the MSBA Legislative Day, which I understand is February 14th this year.
14th, yes.
I want to understand.
Our legislators, how much we love them.
Yes, because we care.
Annie, can I point out a couple things?
Yes, please.
To those of you that haven't had the opportunity to read this yet, there are two things that I'd like to point out as being really critical in this year with the new governor and overwhelmingly one-sided legislature where one party has a supermajority. Those are two things to keep your eye on, is the underfunded Missouri public schools. Missouri is under a huge budget crunch, and there will be cuts, and I think we're all nervous about what kind of cuts will be made to our funding, but even more so than our funding, schools that don't have the support, the tax support of their local communities like we do. But in the interest of all Missouri students, we hope that the legislature will find a way to keep us at our current funding level, even though we're quite underfunded. And the other thing is, I understand that the new Speaker of the House is very interested in pushing through a voucher proposition. And what that does is, that opens up a very wide vehicle for public money to go towards private and parochial schools. Those schools are not required to accept every student, they don't have to undergo the same testing, they don't have to undergo the same accreditation process that we do, and basically, there are no rules. So, number one, it would be hurting our public schools tremendously financially, especially those in lower-income areas that don't have the funding that we have here. But also, it would really be like throwing the money into the wind, because we have no idea where it will be spent or how it will be spent, and what those children will be lacking in their education. So that is under your support local control and professional educators section here. So when, when the public goes to read this document, I hope they pay special attention to that, and pay special attention to what's going on in Jefferson City as you hear bills being proposed. You can do your citizen duty, which is contact your legislators and let them know how you feel.
And if you need to know who your legislators are, we have some great resources, down to, you know, which legislators represent which school in our district, and we have, as Dr. Marty said, great relationships with all of our legislators and build them with our new legislators as they come in. So we're happy to help connect you with someone if you need that.
I would just say that, one of the challenges in Missouri, it's been an adjustment for me coming to this state, is term limits. And I know that there are a lot of people who think term limits are good, and they may be, but there's a lot of turnover, turnover, which requires us to be attentive. And when I said Annie and I met with a legislator brand-new, he's on the Education Committee, so it's an opportunity for us to do some teaching. But term limits, again, may have some merit, but they really cause us to have, when people get experienced, they're, then they're out. And we've, you know, we've had, for example, Sue Allen, who represents us very well, has now been term limited out, and she's been replaced by Derek, who was honored with the certificate. But, so I mean, that's an example of what happens pretty rapidly, as it does with the governor's office as well. So it does require us to really be ongoing and work with legislators, and again, Annie is, and her work is really, does a good job, and I think, in trying to track bills and follow bills and keep our communication open with our legislators.
We try. There's a lot of new legislation coming in. There's a lot of bills that have been prefiled and probably a little more than in previous years, and we're getting, we're seeing, you know, 20, 25 bills a day right now, that they're looking to us for fiscal implications and other implications. So it's definitely something that, over the next couple of months, that we'll need everyone's help to watch, and as we see kind of what's going into committee and what's coming out of committee, then we can focus our work more, I think.
Can I just, one more comment. Mike Fulton and I met last week, and Mike and I agreed that this, our, Mike Fulton's the superintendent at Pattonville, I'm sorry, and one of our partners in this work, and Eric Knoss at Rockwood as well. We said that this probably will become valuable as we talk to our legislators in Washington, DC as well, because these platforms are, as Beth said, there's going to be a significant turnover and change in DC as well, and certainly some challenges to schools' funding and how we look at public education in this country as a whole.
Well, it was wonderful to serve on this committee with these various, not only you, but the many superintendents. The pretty wise things that were said, I think, led to great things, was to riddle this down to one page, and to make it positive, was the desire to show the legislature, we really want to work like you, we understand you have a difficult job, and instead giving you 25 points to worry about, here's three or four that couldn't get these done, we've done a lot of good for kids. So it was just a wonderful effort, and I've learned a lot by being part of it, and thank you, Annie, for you addressed yourself so well and keeping us on track.
I don't know about that, but thank you.
That being said, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2017 legislative positions as presented in the January 1, 2017 board meeting material? Roll call, please. Thank you for having me. And we'll move right into our work session on libraries, the library media program evaluation. Dr. Nathan Tyson, our Director of Data Management and Research.
So Mr. Jacob, Dr. Marty, members of the board, I, my name is Bill Bass, I'm actually going to start us tonight after my stuff comes up. So I just want to give you some context as to what we have done so far in our program evaluation, and let you know where we're going. I'm super excited about the changes that are coming in libraries, and what you have in front of you are two documents that have come out by external organizations around the country that are helping guide our work in Parkway. So as we think about our program evaluation, everything that drives all the work that we do in the library is the mission. Just like many of our classes in all of our curricular areas, the mission drives us. And what I think is unique about our library program is, we touch all kids, regardless of grade level, regardless of school. Every kid comes through the library at some point in time during their careers, and that gives us a kind of a unique perspective. And so because of the mission being what it is, that has, that has caused us to shift and look at our work differently a little bit. And so we have consulted many external partners, from the Department of Education to the Alliance for Excellent Education, the International Society for Technology and Education, St. Louis County Library, American Association of School Librarians. We have been contact, contacted by and in contact with each of these departments and organizations on multiple times over the last six months, as we have begun this work around libraries and the way the libraries are changing in this digital age. And so one of the frameworks that is in front of you is Project Connect, and this is from, this was started through Follett, who we have a partnership with, but they quickly worked with the Department of Education to really focus on what a digital-age library looks like and what the librarian's role is in the digital age. So this is guiding much of our instructional work. And the next piece, the Future Ready Libraries Program, which is the one that has the wheel on it, this is the one that has been adopted by and put out through the Department of Education for the United States, and in conjunction with their Future Ready Schools Initiative that we signed on to two years ago as a district. And so each of these organizations have, and because of the transition in administration, it has been given to the Alliance for Excellent Education as they are, as they are working through that transition. Excuse me. So the Future Ready Libraries is a new document, a new framework that has come out, and it has guided our work, but what we found is, we are doing many of the things that were already a part of that. And so just for, this is just for reference, if you have questions about it, I am happy to answer that, but the Future Ready Libraries is, these two documents are really guiding much of our work. And so our work began in earnest last summer, where we had a, we called it the Future Ready Design Studio, is development that we had for librarians, where they came and they worked through the Future Ready Framework, which hadn't actually been published at that point yet, but it was a draft. We worked through the Future Ready Framework and Project Connect to kind of see where our work already aligns to the work that is going on around the country. From there, we have a core group of librarians throughout the district at all grade levels that have, we had some development, we went and partnered with the county library, the same county library that we honored last, that you honored last year for our Library Card Initiative. We partnered with Follett again. We partnered with Follett again to get a national view, so we had a national view on this day, we had a local view with the County Library, and then we had Amy Gerken-Cotes come in and talk to us about professional development and what professional development looks like in the digital age. And so, that day began our, more of our local work around program evaluation and analyzing the things that make a school library program effective in a digital age. And that's the, that's kind of the impetus there, is that digital age, because things have changed. As Mr. Jacob was talking about our Open Library Forum, things are a lot different. If you walk into any of the St. Louis Public Libraries these days, you will see they're going through a massive transformation, and we're seeing that in our schools as well. And then finally, back to that Open Libraries Forum, we had an event with the community where we had approximately 60 people join us on a Thursday night in December to talk about libraries, and we had a panel discussion of experts in the field through Maslow, the Association of, the Missouri Association of School Librarians, the St. Louis County Library, Lindenwood University, as well as Follett. And so, we're trying to get as many different perspectives as we come and as we learn about the work that libraries are doing today. And with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Tyson, who will walk you through our topics.
All right, always good to be with you all, and I just want to commend Bill Bass and his team, because they really grabbed the bull by the horns on this one. In Parkway, we really, with program evaluations, it's kind of a loose framework, because we want to give plenty of flexibility so that the program or the curricular area can really move the direction that they want to move for the program evaluation, and he's really, they've been off and running, so kudos to them. I think they've been doing a great job. We are going to go ahead here and just quickly touch on the main topics and then the guiding questions. Again, the purpose of this is to let you know where, where Bill and his team are at this point in time, after meeting together and collaborating and deciding, okay, here's what we want to study, but now, really, we want to hear from the Board of Education and make sure we're not missing anything that you all think would be important for us to include as, as we move forward with this. So, the main topics are: role of the librarian, digital strategies, student choice and personalization, flexible programming, and literacy advocacy. And Bill included some, some pictures here, just to kind of give you a little sense of what's been going on here with each of these and what they would include. So, the role of librarian, guiding questions, what does it mean to be a librarian in the digital age? In today's ever-changing world, what characteristics define the influence librarians have on their communities? How can librarians cultivate productive, safe, and responsible citizens in a digital The second main topic is digital strategies. The guiding questions, what kind of digital resources should libraries provide to students for use in curricular areas, and what new challenges, demands, and expectations are libraries facing in terms of services and digital products to add value and satisfy the changing information needs of the community? Our third main topic is student choice and personalization. Guiding questions, when students visit school libraries, what activities and services should be readily available to support learning? How does the library support personalized learning experiences for students? And in what ways can the library support student creativity and exploration? Under programming, the guiding questions, what programs can the library offer that have the potential to transform the educational experiences of all students? How do we evaluate the success of the programs that we offer our communities? What additional development do librarians need in order to meet the needs of every student? What strategies are librarians using to respond to the social-emotional needs of students? How do libraries connect the school community through programming, space, design, and instructional leadership? What strategies can libraries use to address equity needs, access, experience, resources in their communities? And then the final main topic is literacy advocacy, and the final guiding questions, what strategies do libraries use to support the love of literature and encourage a culture of reading for all? And how do libraries support and enhance the multiple forms of literacies that students will create and encounter throughout their lives? So then, any feedback would be welcome at this time.
Any questions, or, just, please.
I think this might be for Bill. In the age of digital reading and not necessarily the need for books that we've had in the past, how do we broaden the scope of the resources available to our students electronically? For instance, I know I borrow books on my Kindle from St. Louis Public Library, or St. Louis County Public Library. Is that resource available to our kids since they all have library cards now? And how does that change the role of our school libraries?
Yeah, thank you for that, and we won't be answering them tonight.
Right.
Yes, absolutely, so, but they will be duly noted, all of this feedback, and we'll put it together, and then we'll make sure to include it as we move forward with the study. Thank you, Beth.
My question would be, what about the physical space? Libraries occupy a large space in a school, whether it's elementary or high school. Is that something in the digital age that changes more to the classroom? And I certainly think we need librarians, and they have a tough job to stand on top of all this now, because it changes every day, but it seems like, you know, maybe they don't have to pick up and leave out of the classroom to go to the library. Good question.
Just in my experience recently in seeing children graduate from elementary to middle to high school, it seems that the role of the librarian changes in what they're actually doing with the students. And I, I had no idea until recently what the role of a librarian can include in high school, such as helping a student research citations and the work cited, and how to do that for a paper. And so, I would think that it would be important to understand what those roles are at each level of education that the student is going through, and to make sure that the students know that the library, what the access of the librarian is available for them in helping them with their own education.
Good.
I have a kind of awkward question. So, as we are moving forward in the digital world, we are disconnecting the human interaction, and is there any way we want to make sure that we don't isolate our kids totally and still engage them in utilizing all these great resources we have? In addition to that, also, what kind of online learning opportunities we can create for those that cannot, you know, right now, have the ability?
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you want to add to the study?
You mentioned professional development for librarians, what about professional development for students? As part of the process, you know, what will be done to orient students, assist them, whatever it takes to utilize the libraries in the most resourceful way? How can they, you know, apply their classroom work to the library in terms of it being a service and a resource for them?
It used to be pretty simple. You walked in, you opened the card, you had a log, you got your book, you checked it out, you took it. It's not like that anymore, is it?
I guess another question would be, are we going to continue to purchase printed materials? To what extent?
How do we make that decision?
You know, I don't think we ever want to lose the printed materials, obviously, but that's a big expense, and do we continue doing that, or do we put it on a digital forum so that students have access rather than the printed material?
And then what about the students who don't have access at home?
All good questions. Any additional that you would like to add? You don't have to have them all tonight. So, if you come up with something, please, feel free to pass along to Nathan or to Nathan.
For sure, yeah, we'll include them.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You guys are always great.
Thank you, Nathan, but I just think this isn't on the agenda, but Bill, Bill's really assumed a lot of leadership, and recently, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I should have brought it with me. You just were placed on another board or re-elected, or tell us a little bit about that.
So, I, excuse me, I am serving on the Board of Directors for the International Society for Technology and Education, and I am, this year, I will be their treasurer.
So, I just, I just think it's neat, Bill has assumed a lot of leadership locally, but now even nationally, and I just really think it's neat, and I think the technology piece really works so well with this library role, which is part of his major, many responsibilities, but I just want to take the time to thank Bill, and when I look at things like Future Ready, which, you know, when I received that last year, the invitation, I talked to Lisa and Bill, and, you know, should we sign on? And I know Bill's response was, yeah, why wouldn't we sign on? It's basically a commitment, and they just continue to, you know, challenge us and send us things, but as Bill said, we're, we're probably ahead of the curve, as we are on the, on the library card. I get the information that suggests, you know, more and more schools around the country truly are following our lead in terms of issuing library cards, working with local community libraries. But anyway, just, thank you, Bill, and I just thought it was an opportunity for us to recognize your leadership, and not only in this study, but your ongoing work.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Like many of our staff that do extra things and distinguish themselves, Bill's also one of the recognized, and the community's one of the top recognized Google experts.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
More likely to have him.
All right, our students benefit from everything.
Well, thanks so much. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion and a second? With the Board of Education call for a special meeting at 7:30 AM on Friday, January 20th, for the purpose of participating in the Parkway, Rockwood, and Pattonville Legislative Breakfast, which will be held in the Rockwood Administrative Hacks, in Eureka, New Jersey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries 7-0.
You know, we just guaranteed ourselves a nice storm, right? Because every year we have a storm.
Well, especially when it's in Rockwood.
Well, one's probably coming, my son's on his way out, stuck in Memphis, I'm accepting it.
Mine was out there, too.
It's coming, huh?
So, the next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, February 8, 2017, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. And at this point, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you again, and thank you all.